Morning and thank you for joining us virtually. It's April 16th, 2020. And Gary first will take the role.
Yes, Chair. First, our staff support today is Kevin Moss, Clerk to the Board, and Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. A roll call, Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation.
Kind of weird. We're holding this meeting virtually. If you're joining us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send a comment to be read during the citizen communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it anytime during the meeting by email to clacko news@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area where you're from. And first off, Gary, what's up?
Yes, Commissioners, we have your weekly COVID-19 update. To present is Nancy Bush, the Director of Disaster Management and the Incident Commander for our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. So we'll start out with our numbers for the day. In Oregon, there's 1,663 positives, 31,668 negatives, and 58 deaths. Clackamas County has 142 positives. We still only have three deaths. And there are 2,892 negatives. Multnomah County has 430 positives. They have 22 deaths and they have 7,348 negatives. Washington County has 364 positives. They have seven deaths and 4,523 negatives. And statewide, we have a 401 of those over 1,600 that are hospitalized. So first, I just want to take a moment. This is Thank You Week for me. I wanted to be sure, I wanted to thank all of you listening, all of you, the Commissioners, and for all of the support that we get here at the EOC. For the general public, we want to continue to thank you for your social distancing because it is working and you're starting to see, hopefully, that, you know, things are just leveling off and we're going to see more of a hump than a spike. So those are really good things and I want to thank everyone for that. Some of the things we're working on here at the EOC, we are working with two cities, Estacada and Wilsonville, to do some utility mailings in their city and we are going to have those translated into Spanish as well. So that partnership continues to go. We're working with those that may do casework or do some medical checking in on for those that are medically frail and making sure that they have PPE so that they can do their jobs effectively and safely. We continue to work on the food programs. We're continuing to see that the food insecurity is here in the county. So we're trying to just cast a wider net and bring in more of our partners to make sure that those who need food are getting food and are being checked on as well. We also have recovery efforts that are going on or we're going to start those. We actually have a group coming together to see what recovery may look like or what the recovery group actually may look like here in Clackamas County. Our cities are also very interested in that as well. We had a conversation with them this morning and they would like to be a part of those efforts as well as working within the region and the state. So that is something that you'll hear a lot more about later. We don't have everything formulated yet, but we're working on it. And then before I introduce Dr. President, I just wanted to let you know that as your emergency manager and your Director of Disaster Management, we have a fire watch. So, yeah. So we're watching the fire watch. It is not a red flag at this point, but we're expecting some very low humidity over the, I think, later today and tomorrow. So we do have that fire watch out. And just like everybody else in the country, COVID may not be our only thing we have to deal with. If you've heard about all the tornadoes and stuff, so if you can imagine putting another natural disaster on top of what we're doing. You know, we have some of our coworkers in the country that are really, really got a lot going on besides COVID. And that could happen to us too. So I just wanted to let you know that we're working on that. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sarah President and I think she's going to answer some of your questions and give you a brief presentation.
All right, thank you so much, Nancy. And I just would really like to echo Nancy's words around thanking all of you for all of the work you're doing and deep, deep gratitude to our community for following the stay home, stay healthy orders, for doing our physical distancing to sticking together as a community to get through this because it is working. Our curve is flattened. I've been asked a lot recently about when the peak will be and my response has been, well, ideally, there is no peak. It's, it has become flat enough, it's more of a hump. We are still hoping for decrease in cases, mostly decreasing hospitalizations as a sign of the more severe and significant cases by the end of this month, early May. As long as we maintain our physical distancing and maintain this flattening of the curve, our hospital systems are doing okay. The Governor Brown put out her criteria for recovery earlier this week. Those include increasing PPE for all healthcare providers. That still is a top concern. It also includes increasing testing and I'm happy to talk more about testing. I do believe that in our region, our testing capacity as far as being able to perform the tests is adequate for our needs. The limitations still remain in materials for the tests, including the test reagents. So there are a number of things besides the tests themselves that are limiting factors for expanding testing. And the public health workforce, again, I think we've discussed how, we've discussed in a few calls, how our current staffing is meeting the needs by being able to investigate every case and identify contacts. But we are pulling in a lot of staff who otherwise have other jobs and the sustainability of that is still something that we're continually thinking about. But currently, we are connecting with every case that is reported to us and identifying and contacting their close contacts. Let's see. The, oh, yes, yes, the fire watch. I do also want to reiterate that is a public health concern and we have some evidence that air pollution, including particulate matter from fires, can exacerbate any lung condition, including the COVID-19. So that's something that is certainly on my mind to be watching out for as we move into the summer and drier months. There have been a questions, a number of questions about, around testing and how testing is going to work coming out of, out of our physical distancing and into recovery mode. The antibody test is something that has been discussed a lot. There's only one FDA-approved antibody test, but it still needs to be really taken in context. We still are not sure exactly if that means that someone is immune long-term or not. There was a study out of China this week that was promising in that way, but much more, much more research on that is needed before we can use a positive antibody test to be assured that people are immune. But that is promising and on the horizon. There are a lot of tests out there that are not well-studied and may not be fully applicable in the way that they are being marketed. So we all need to be really careful about what we hear about the antibody testing. I do think the antibody testing is going to be helpful for us as doing the PCR tests, tests for whether the virus is there right now. So somebody testing negative today could test positive tomorrow if they're, you know, recently exposed or, or just not shedding as much virus as they need to have a positive PCR test. And so the antibody test is going to be ideally more useful for us. And I'm happy to talk more about that. I think that's the main thing I want to present, but I'm happy to answer questions. And thank you guys for having me at this meeting so that I can be here and discuss this with you.
Any questions? There's Paul and then Ken.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm trying to navigate this new PC-based Zoom. So I've been using the iPhone, so I don't see the raise hand feature yet. I'm learning. So Dr. President, I've been, as I mentioned before, I'm kind of looking at the OHA website every day and I noticed that, you know, here about a week ago, we were seeing about 60 to 70, 75, 80 cases a day new in Oregon. And over the last couple, three days, that number's been reduced down to about 20 to 30, 40. You know, so is that, is that a sign that maybe we're on the downhill side?
I absolutely hope so and I can't say 100%. We were talking yesterday about how last weekend was the Easter holiday. If people did get together in groups, we wouldn't necessarily see a spike from that for two and a half, potentially three weeks. I think these are things to think about. I would really like to see a sustained and clear decrease over at least, at least a two-week period of time to have that reassurance that we are going down. So fingers crossed, yes, but unknown still.
Commissioner Fisher.
Pardon?
Yeah, Commissioner Fisher has her hand raised and as well as.
Ken first and then.
Given the fact that we are not able to do massive testing, it suggests that the statistics in terms of infection may be on the low side. Do we have any idea when we might have enough tests and reagents and all of the other material necessary for massive testing to come online? Or is that still just crushing our fingers and hoping that we can get stuff from the feds?
At this point, it is really a global supply chain issue and we may at times have enough, but not, it's not consistent enough to be secure that we will have enough. If we have enough now to do a bunch of testing, will we have it next week? There are still uncertainties around that and until there is a reliable supply chain for all of the factors, then continuing the symptom-based and more severe and focus on our vulnerable populations as a testing approach strategy is what we need to do.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Oh, Sonya.
Thank you. So I was curious about, New York is now saying if you're going out in public and can't maintain six feet of distance, you have to wear a mask. Just curious, what was the situation there that led that happening? And where are we at with any possible changes with wearing masks?
So in our region, we are, we are having consistent recommendations with the CDC for federally across the, across the country to wear a facial covering if you cannot maintain your social distancing. As far as being more prescribed or any enforcement around that, New York is a place that has many more people in closer proximity. So that's something to think about. They have also had more cases and sort of a stronger surge than we have had here with, with more strain on their healthcare system than we have had here. And so I think that they strain on their resources as well as sort of the specific factors that New York City is, you know, many more people more closely together makes that something that they, they need in order to keep their curve flattened. Whereas here, our curve is well-flattened at this time and I don't see a need to increase our strength of recommendation around it beyond what we have now.
Okay. And then my next question, I was reading in the newspaper this morning about studying of the virus and showing that people that have been severely ill have like kidney issues or heart issues or has there been any talk about planning for that? I mean, any thoughts about that? I'm always thinking about moving the, and Nancy Bush inspired me yesterday, the EOC, to talk about how thinking now about a healthy recovery is really important for a healthy recovery. So that's one thing that's on my mind is.
Absolutely, yes. I have also been talking with our Public Health Department around what health-related data can we watch that is, you know, impacted by this pandemic? So I know that the American Heart Association was recently putting out some fairly large research grants that I know I passed on to my colleagues at OHSU around the cardiac effects of the pandemic, both potentially, you know, whether there were increases in heart disease for people not having their normal standard of care versus, you know, effects of the disease on cardiac ways. So I think there will be more research there on a federal level and I'm really encouraging our Health Department to find what data we have available. Similar to the, the environmental health kind of data point report that we had recently, I think we need to have, we need to watch the environmental health indicators as well as many other indicators that we do have in our public health database and just start looking at what's being affected and how things are changing as we come into recovery.
Oh, that's good. Then my last question, I've been very impressed the more that I learn about how well we have been doing with our current resources and tracing.
Yeah.
I do understand that one of the criteria from Governor Brown and it's recommended is that we have capacity to really trace any case once we begin reopening of the economy. And I'm just, you know, we're going to be entering into a budget. Well, this week, I mean, next week, actually, we'll have our first budget meeting. I'm wanting to just, we're thinking ahead as to how are we going to divert resources that may be existing and are other folks strategizing that quickly because we're making these potential decisions coming up real soon.
Absolutely. So, you know, currently, we have about double the infectious disease staff that we had prior to this. We have take, we have, we have, you know, hired new temporary employees to do contact investigations as well as taking some individuals from other work. And so looking at that will be important. I do think that we have some surge capacity around students and various other places that we can get more help for that contact investigation. What I would like to also think about though is as we come out of recovery, more than identifying the contacts, we need to focus more on ensuring a very strict quarantine or isolation. So basically, with our physical distancing measures, we are all in somewhat of a quarantine. As we lift that, we're going to have to focus those quarantine efforts on the close contacts, which involves making sure that they have housing, making sure that they have access to food and their other needs if they are strictly quarantining in their homes. So that takes other resources that we will need to be continuing to think about as far as people to transport food to them and meet their other, their other needs in order to maintain that quarantine and isolation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chair Bernard, we have Commissioner Schrader.
Commissioner Schrader.
Yes, Dr. President. Is there any indication that what I have been hearing is that potentially New York has more of a European strain of this and that we have a different strain? And the virulence is based on the origin and mutations of the virus? Is there any work going on to determine if that indeed is something we need to be concerned about?
You know, I've heard that also. I haven't seen anything definitive. It's a great question and I don't have an answer for you, but I've, I've heard rumblings around that as well. I can't, I can't say anymore to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd say, you know, in my discussions with the tri-chairs is that, and with the folks, Nancy and Dr. President, we're entering the toughest phase. The toughest phase is going to be loosening up the restrictions and making sure that it doesn't cause a spike. So we're all working together to figure out how to do that. And I know that later today, I talked to the mayors and they're looking for some guidance from us about how best to do that. I also spent some time on the phone with Market Master in Milwaukee and I gotta say, the Oregon Farmers Market Association is doing some tremendous work. They are meeting weekly to discuss this statewide and they're, they're really doing some tremendous work in making sure that, that, you know, people stay healthy. They are, they're required to have monitors to watch people too. So I'm interested in watching what happens with the farmers markets, myself having started one, one a few years ago. And thank you very much, Dr. President and Nancy, for your input. And I guess we'll probably be talking to you later today.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Gary, turning it over to you.
Before we move on quickly, Commissioners, earlier this week, you did extend the temporary closure of county buildings until May 4th. So that is our extended date that we are continuing to serve the public remotely. The county is still open for business, but we are doing our work remotely. So almost every public service is still being maintained, but we ask you to please contact the county through the telephone, the website or email to reach out for services. So that's the final update on COVID and we're ready now to move on to your first presentation of the day, Commissioners. This is to proclaim April 12 through 18, 2020, which is this week, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week and recognizing 911 telecommunicators and as emergency responders in Clackamas County. Presenting this will be Cheryl Bledsoe, who is the Director of Central Communications or CCOM, our 911 center here in Clackamas County. Hi. Thank you, Administrator. Director Bledsoe, can you raise your hand so we can promote you onto the screen for the Commissioners?
Is he here, Kevin? She did it. Do you want me to? Okay.
Got it. Just a moment here, Commissioners.
There you go. You're, you're on mute though. There you go.
Hey, Kevin, I think Cheryl was hoping to bring in all the people named Cheryl Bledsoe, which are members of her team, because I'd like to be on the screen as well as Cheryl, if that's possible. We will take care of them, Administrator. But Cheryl, if you'd like to go ahead with your presentation while that's happening, please.
Absolutely. So good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Bledsoe and I'm the Director of Clackamas County 911. And I'm here to celebrate and honor National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week and to recognize our 911 employees as the first first responders here in Clackamas County. You will see with me today that there's a number of everyday heroes that work to answer or make possible the answering of nearly 300,000, 911 calls here in Clackamas County every year. The thin yellow line of the telecommunicator flag behind us represents the fact that we serve as one of the three primary colors with the red of our fire services and the blue of our law enforcement departments. 911 is the critical first step between the public identifying the need for help and the dispatch of life-saving services to help find them. Today at Clackamas 911, there are 51 employees who serve as 911 call takers, dispatchers, training and quality assurance officers, supervisory, technical and administrative staff. We serve around the clock all 365 days a year and are ready to take every single call. Our accomplishments over the past two years have included the hiring and training and certifying of nine new call-taking and dispatch staff. We currently have eight more that are also in training and on their way to certification. We've adopted a brand-new computer-aided dispatch system with three other 911 centers in our region so we can seamlessly share information throughout our jurisdictions. We've improved location accuracy of cell phone reporting through the use of two different technologies called Rapid SOS and Caller Location Query, which sends a 911 caller a text message or to return back the exact coordinates of their location. This has been tremendously instrumental in search and rescue calls and finding people when their first cell phone doesn't give us an accurate location. And more recently, in response to COVID-19, we are among the first 911 centers to adopt both a pandemic protocol and an early intervention tool to ensure the safety of our emergency response partners during this rapidly evolving event. Today, we ask you not only to recognize April 12 through 18 as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week here in Clackamas County, but we're asking you to go a step further. 911 telecommunicators have been classified nationally as clerical employees by the Department of Labor. Our professional associations, both Apco and NINA, have been strong advocates of change at the national level. And this year, there are bills in both the House and the Senate which are called the 911 Saves Act, which seeks to reclassify us as first responders. While these bills are presently stalled despite many, having many sponsors, a number of jurisdictions simply are not waiting to stand behind their 911 employees. While we recognize that local recognition is simply that, it is our hope that enough jurisdictions will take similar action to us and will encourage our colleagues at the federal level to do what is right and move our classification from clerical to protected service occupations. Recently, two counties in Colorado took bold moves to recognize their 911 telecommunicators as first responders. And today, we ask you, Clackamas County, to make the same proclamation which reads as follows. Recognizing 911 telecommunicators as first responders in Clackamas County. Whereas Clackamas County is elevating the status of its 911 emergency dispatchers and telecommunicators to first responders in a move that outpaces a similar effort on the national level. And whereas Clackamas County could not wait for the 911 Saves Act that is stalled in Congress to give our dispatchers a classification of first responders that they've earned and deserved. Whereas all emergency telecommunicators within Clackamas County are trained in emergency medical dispatch, qualifying them to offer a variety of potentially life-saving instructions, including CPR, bleeding control, choking, childbirth and airway maintenance over the telephone until paramedics arrive on scene. And whereas in 2019, Clackamas Emergency Telecommunicators gave medical guidance to over 29,000 callers and Clackamas 911 telecommunicators were recognized in their roles of saving the lives of at least 20 people who suffered cardiac arrest in our community. And whereas the 911 User Board, made up of 15 law enforcement and fire agencies, unanimously resolved to support the 911 Saves Act and as all the agencies who work with CCOM already consider them the first first responders as their information and instructions are critical to keeping our residents and our field units safe. Whereas April 12 to 18, 2020 is recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week and Clackamas County typically recognizes and appreciates the dedicated professional work done by all 911 telecommunicators during this week. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Clackamas County Board of Commissioners that 911 telecommunications within Clackamas County, who work at Clackamas County CCOM, are hereby recognized as the important first responders who serve our community dated the 16th day of April 2020. May I stand for questions?
Thank you. Of course, I support your proposal or the, you know, that you guys are first responders. I mean, I can't think of who's before you. You're obviously first responders. And, you know, I, I, first I gotta say, Cheryl, it's amazing you can hire so many people with the same name.
Thank you. It's a good name.
Must be hell when a phone call comes in with Cheryl. But anyway, you guys do a fantastic job in some of the most challenging phone calls. I know there was one fairly, I don't know, months fly by. Months ago, that was very challenging to everyone who works there. And I, you guys do a fantastic job. And since you've been on board, I've learned more about what you guys do than I ever thought I would. So I appreciate it. So any, Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Savas.
Commissioner Savas.
Getting the hang of it. I do want to recognize our 911 folks as well. It's been a Commissioner here for nine years, going on 10. And through that course time, I've learned that it's not easy. It's not an easy. And through that course time, I've learned that it's not easy. It's not an easy job, and it takes a special kind of person to handle the load, the kind of work it is. So it's over the course of time, just understanding that and realizing the challenges that that department faces with bringing in the right people and finding the right people. It's a tough job, and we really, really, really do value everything that you all do and recognize the special gift you have to be able to do this work. So thank you very much.
Kevin? Anyone else?
Commissioner Humberton.
Ken.
Cheryl, I just want to say, having been on the receiving end of instructions from 911 during the course of my career, I really had no idea how intense it could be in that cave that your folks work in. Quite frankly. But as Jim said, I learned a lot by touring through there and seeing what your folks do, and I think it's extraordinary. When you're out on the streets someplace responding, it tends to be a little more individually focused. And I see how many different ways requests come into your people, whether it's by text or cellphone or computer or telephone and the multiple screens. I have enough trouble doing an iPad and my computer for this meeting today without having to think about doing what they do day in and day out. So very much appreciate the service of your people.
Thank you.
Right. Mr. Chair, we have Commissioner Schrader and then Commissioner Fisher.
Martha.
Hopefully, the dogs will not be barking, Cheryl, as I tell you how much I appreciate everything that you do. I've been in your area many, many times and watched people at work. And I am absolutely amazed at the skill set that you have to have to do that. And you guys are the frontline that really do save lives of our citizens in this community. Community. So thank you so much for everything you do. And all I can say is I'm so glad that we're moving ahead and that we are recognizing you to be the professionals you truly are as part of our public safety net.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for everything that ever was, but also to acknowledge the incredible difficulty that presents itself job. I was so moved, actually. I don't remember how many months ago it was now, but when there was the terrible trauma of suddenly violence in Clackamas County. And Cheryl's email out to and to others, because we received it, really emphasized the importance of understanding the secondary trauma that we go through. And when you're fielding that that call, that's firsthand trauma right there. That's traumatizing, and it affects our emotions, and it affects so much of how we're able to. So I really appreciate just the acknowledgement. That's a part of the job. And that it's okay to be struggling and work through it. And to, as a community, it's really important. Cheryl, your leadership is so recognized. And we really, really thank everyone for their incredible dedication to keeping our communities safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. So would entertain a motion?
Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we proclaim April 12 to the 18th as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week and recognize 191 telecommunications as emergency responders in Clackamas County. Any further discussion? It's a big day, actually. Congratulations. Ken, I mean Kevin.
Commissioner Humberton.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Bernard.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate you all showing up for today's meeting, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item I'd like to announce that the Board of Recess is the Board of County Commissioners and convenes as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. Also like to introduce Ann Leanstar. Leanstr. You're welcome to correct me on that, Ann. Ann is our new Housing Authority Board Member and will be on with us for many years to come, I'm sure. All right. With that, Gary?
Yes, and Ann, you are muted. We didn't hear you right there, but welcome, Housing Commissioner Ann. So First Commissioners is a Housing Authority public hearing on the proposed 2020-2021 Housing Authority of Clackamas County Annual Plan. Jill Smith, the Housing Authority Director of Clackamas County, will present.
Good morning, Chair Bernard and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I am Jill Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Annually, the Housing Authority, all housing authorities are required to prepare annual plans and to go through a public process, which includes a public hearing. The planning process ensures that the public and the Housing Authority Board has the opportunity to both review the performance of the Housing Authority and to comment on goals and objectives stated within our annual plan. Next year, we will be required to come before you with a five-year plan for HUD requirements. So before I get into a very high-level overview of the annual plan, I want you to be aware that it was developed in consultation with our Resident Advisory Board, or the RAB, as we call it. The RAB is made up of residents from public housing and the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. They met on January 16, 2020, to review the plan and the proposed policy changes. All members were given a book of the plan containing all policy changes, and it was viewed and approved by the RAB on January 16. The plan went out for public comment between January 19 and March 5. The comments we have received thus far are under attachment K in your packet. Today, we do not need board action. Any comments or changes that are received or directed by the board will be added to the annual plan and will be brought back before you in a special meeting scheduled for April 30. I wanted you to know that we expanded our notice requirements of our annual plan this year. In addition to the HUD requirements, which are to post the annual plan on our website, post it in libraries, make sure it's available in all of our offices. We also gave all of our Resident Advisory Board members high-level synopsis of the plans with links to where people could learn more. And we emailed out that synopsis to all of our Section 8 voucher holders as well. We tried really hard to make people more aware of what's going on and to seek comment. So moving forward, this public hearing consists of three parts. First, I'm going to share a very high-level review of our past performance over the last year at the Housing Authority, as described in the plan. Second, I'll provide a very high-level review of proposed 2020-2021 annual plan, new activities, and proposed policy amendments. I'm going to focus on those that are not just a cleanup-type activity, things that are substantial changes. And then third, I'll turn it over for discussion, for open discussion, for questions, and of course, for citizen testimony. Any questions before I jump in? Okay. I just want you to be aware of what we receive from HUD. The Housing Authority has an annual budget authority of approximately $25 million, and $20 million of that comes from HUD. The Housing Authority has a goal to reduce its dependency on federal funding. And you'll see that goal woven throughout this plan. A lot of our development and opting out of public housing is linked to the ongoing concern that federal funding continues to decline while the need increases. The areas we receive funding for are the Housing Choice Voucher Program, what you commonly hear referred to as Section 8, the public housing program, administrative costs to cover the operations of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And we also receive funding for capital to maintain the public housing buildings that I think you've all seen. I wanted to touch quickly on some of the successes the Housing Authority has had in the past year. We achieved high-performance status, which is actually a very challenging achievement. It's a designation that HUD provided us. To achieve that, you have to maintain the physical condition of the public housing communities, the units themselves. We went through a massive HUD inspection in the past year. We have to pass high-level audits. We had no audit findings in the past year. We have a lot of head scrutiny over our financial and administrative management of our programs and the way that we obligate and expend our federal funds. There aren't a lot of high performers, and I'm very proud that we've been able to obtain that designation. It actually makes us eligible for grants and for opportunities that others won't be. And speaking of grants, the Housing Authority continues to compete successfully for new voucher awards, serving special populations. So truly, all that HUD is providing right now is vouchers or funding to serve high-need special populations. The Housing Authority successfully received additional Section 8 vouchers for veterans, homeless veterans, which is called the VASH program. It comes with services from the VA Medical Center and rent assistance tied to homeless, high-barrier veterans. We have a total of 121 of those now. We received 25 more this year. Mainstream vouchers are for non-elderly, under-62, disabled homeless individuals. We received 50 new mainstream vouchers this year and have a total of 166. And we also received a new award of Foster Youth Independence vouchers that are for foster kids aging out of the Foster Care Program, age 18 to 25, who are homeless in a partnership with DHS. We have up to 25 of those that we can utilize. And I just want you to know that these are really hard-to-serve populations. It's essential that services are aligned with the resources, the housing resources. Right now, we have 88 of our 125 VASH utilized. That means there's several that aren't utilized. We cannot serve homeless veterans unless we get a referral from the VA Medical Center. That has been an ongoing challenge for us. Right now, we have 10 homeless veterans out looking for rental units with those. Mainstream program, the one that I said is non-elderly, elderly, disabled homeless, of 166, 80 are being utilized. We've got 39 folks that are disabled homeless, working with service providers out in the community, looking for a unit today, right now. Of the foster youth kids, we have got 15 that have been referred to us from DHS. Eight of these kids are out looking for a unit with case management assistance. And two are in the process of working with us to get their voucher issued to them. So it's a lot of work. It takes a lot of partnerships to successfully help these folks. And I wanted to call out that the Housing Authority is an integral part of serving homeless families and individuals. And in the past year, we have successfully housed 71 homeless individuals and families in permanent housing, and they're stable. And as you can see, that's an ongoing big body of work that we do. Another part of the work that we do that has to be accounted for for HUD requirements in our annual plan is development for new activities or programs. That requires that every intention we have to administer a new program or to potentially redevelop public housing or to work on the metro ground and developing new properties is listed in the annual plan. So while they are all listed, you'll notice, we do not have the capacity to do all of that work in the coming year. But we still are required to flag our intention. In the coming year, we do intend to pursue a Section 18 RAB. Those are confusing terms. Disposition of the Hillside Park Public Housing Unit. That means that we intend to transition them out of being traditional public housing in alignment with the plan that you all have seen and are very familiar with. That would mean that those 100 folks that reside there would receive vouchers and have the opportunity to move and also first opportunity to return once that development's completed. Something I wanted to really flag that we haven't talked a lot about that is in the annual plan in our Development Activities section that we hope to really focus on in the coming year is the Housing Authority has 145 scattered site units all over Clackamas County. And what that means is they're homes and duplexes that are traditional public housing that are all over the county, everywhere from Sandy to Canby. There's little pockets of them everywhere. And because we get such limited funding to maintain and manage and operate these, they're extremely expensive for us to manage. They're the most expensive for us to manage, and we operate in the RAB every year on that group. We would like to move into a process to dispose of them, either through sale or working in partnership with some of our homeownership, like Proud Ground. We've already started some of those conversations. We're prioritizing if any of those families that currently live in them would be able to purchase them, helping them to get ready to do that. But over the several coming years, we would like to move those properties into the private market because we can no longer afford to manage them and maintain them. And we would have to replace them with other units, preferably multifamily units that the Housing Authority can afford to redevelop. That funding would be really instrumental. The sales of those units would allow funding for us to redevelop in areas outside of the metro boundary. That is something that we really want to do.
I thought we had already made that determination.
The Housing Authority, I think, sold about five of those units several years ago. There's still 145 of them.
I thought we were in the process of doing exactly that. The other thing is you have quite a number of vouchers that aren't being used. Is it because there are no units available, or is it because of the folks who own these units? Why?
So this is complicated, and I'm going to bring it up in a few minutes, but it's a really good question, so I'm just going to answer it now. HUD gives us a certain amount of funding in our annual budget authority, and we also have an authorized number of voucher units that we can lease. Unfortunately, they don't give us enough money to reach our unit authorization level just because they don't give us enough money to pay the rent for every family we're authorized to serve. So we're using 99 to 100% of our money, but serving a substantial number fewer than we're authorized to serve.
Sounds like an emergency ordinance, something we should talk about.
Yeah, you're going to see, as I talk about some of the proposed policy changes, that some of them are difficult to consider, and they're directly linked to trying to reduce costs so I can help more people.
Any other questions on this portion?
Yeah. Jill, on the question that Commissioner Bernard just asked, so are you saying the bottleneck there, so to speak, is the available resources, financial resources, not the voucher itself?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The voucher doesn't pay enough rent, so that we have to supplement it, is basically what you're saying.
We can't supplement it. We're not allowed. We can't supplement it. We're not allowed to. HUD doesn't allow you to supplement it.
So either build the units or they don't get any.
Well, this is the rent assistance that we're talking about. So this is the money that pays the rent for folks out in the private market. So one way to reduce the amount of money going into every unit would be to have more affordable housing so that the market rent isn't as high. Therefore, you spend less per unit.
Yeah, but we could build the affordable units.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. It looks like we move on.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead. I think you're pretty familiar with all the development activity going on. Thankfully, Stephen is in front of you quite often related to that. I did want to make you aware that a team of folks applied to OHCS for, they have a pilot permanent supportive housing program that they approved funding for for the first time in the last session. I don't know if any of you remember that. We applied for that with a team of folks. It was highly competitive and we were actually awarded, OHCS is recommending capital funding for our Webster Road Gladstone project. And we will also be eligible to receive service funding for that through this PHS. We went to the Permanent Supportive Housing University and we were the most successful applicant and we're getting funding as a result of it now. So it's very exciting. I'm going to jump into proposed policy changes because this is kind of, I think where the meat of this presentation lives. And on page 10 of 92, I'm going to just call out the page number because it is such a big document and I apologize for that. It's all required. Page 10 of 92, "We're considering a change in the way we issue funding based on the size of a voucher, which directly impacts how much we spend per household." This is just something that we're considering right now. I think that it's quite controversial and what it would do is it's for the Housing Choice Voucher and the public housing programs. So right now, and we did talk about this with the Resident Advisory Board, right now, if you have a family that consists of four people and one of them is a single parent, for example, or, and they have two children, they would get a two, well, we'll say three children, it's so complicated. They would get a three-bedroom unit and the amount of money to support that, which is quite a bit. We're proposing that we consider just two people per bedroom and the family decides where folks sleep. You have to also realize that people have the ability to shop. So you give them an amount of money and they can shop smart and look for units. They're less expensive. But by doing this two-person per room, rather than giving an extra room just to a single head of household, we can serve over 50 additional families a year. So because of the housing emergency, this is something that HUD recommends Housing Authorities consider. It is something we're considering. My staff presented it to me. I think we need to do quite a bit more analysis to make sure there's not disparate impact on communities of color and families. I think there may be. But it is something we're considering and it's something that the RAB was able to get their their heads wrapped around and support because of the housing crisis. So that is something that I welcome questions on. There's more policies we're considering.
Any questions? Oh wait, I'm on.
Commissioner Fisher, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Fisher.
You, yeah, Jill, I appreciate you bringing up the disparities and looking at and analyzing as far as how could things affect folks differently. One thing, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you which page because there are so many pages and trying to point through here. But one thing that I did notice throughout, there's a lot of analysis over breaking down by race and by different characteristics, just overall through the whole issue of housing. And I'm wondering if there's been a disparities. I noticed that we've done the work, but I don't know if we compared it to the overall population in Clackamas County. So if you could just talk about how those disparities are showing up, especially like the waitlist data is fascinating, it's so detailed. I'm curious how that compares overall population.
We did do an analysis based on people that are in poverty that live in Clackamas County, comparing those that we serve. And we actually, I think they did this about two years ago, right before I took over, but I was overseeing the process in my prior role. They found that the Housing Authority was doing a pretty good job. They were serving people of color in almost every category at a higher rate than those that live in poverty in Clackamas County. I can get you the exact numbers. With one exception, they were not doing as great a job with the Asian population. So the last time that they opened their waiting list, they did really specific targeted outreach to culturally provider, culturally specific providers that serve that population, as well as marketed it to that population. And it worked. We saw a big increase in the Asian population. We're trying to do more in that, you know, with that focus, but we could do better. I think we need to do more analysis based on the people that were served. Serving in a prior role, we were even doing analysis of, you know, looking at who's on the waiting list versus who actually gets into units. Because sometimes, you know, without knowing, there are barriers that you put in place. You never understand what's happening unless you look at it. So I think that I'm happy to look deeper and come back to you with that information.
Commissioner.
What'd you say?
Jill, I think it's interesting what we just talked about, about the distribution of people. Sorry, I have a, my little dog is deciding to be a pain right now. But my question is, can you, what about geographically? Are most of these folks in urban areas? Are they in rural areas? I mean, that would be something I'd be curious to know.
That's a really good question. It's actually something I just barely looked at. I'm meeting regularly with work systems with Daisy. We're trying to strategize about how to help folks that are extremely low income in housing all over the county to get involved in training and employment. I think it's really high priority and she asked for that data and I just provided it to her. So I would be happy to send that out to all of you. The majority of our folks live in Oregon City and Milwaukee by far. And some of our policies that I'm going to get to, that I'm proposing we change are part of the reason for that. I think that, you know, it's complex. It's not just our policies. People want to stay where they've always been and where their, you know, where their safety net is and where they're comfortable, but our policies have partially contributed to that. And I'm happy to send that data out to you all if you want to see it.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I just want to build on Commissioner Schrader's question a little bit, pointing out the rural. It's probably no secret to a lot of people that it's more affordable to live in the rural areas in ways, right? At least the rent. If you look at the base rent, that's cheaper in the rural areas. And the closer you get to the hub of the metro region, the more expensive it is. So it would seem, you know, intuitive enough that that's what we ought to be looking for. But those would maybe have high needs or need services, that that's a little bit compromised in rural areas as well. So I just didn't know if we are looking at expanding out into the more affordable areas at all, Jill. I know you have a lot on your plate with the housing bond and everything else that's going on. So, but if you could speak to that briefly, I'd appreciate it.
One of our specific strategies linked to the disposition of all the public housing scattered site homes is to use the funding that we raise to invest in multifamily development in the rural communities. That is part of that strategy. It's a huge need. People should be able, I mean, there's people in poverty all over our county and people need to have choice. So we are talking about that and we'll be bringing you that in the coming year.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Humberton?
Yeah, Jill, I'm curious as to how the cost of transportation then impacts people in the rural areas because it would strike me with very little public transportation available. The necessity of owning and maintaining an automobile becomes more critical. So while you may have a 10 or 15% savings in the rent end of things, your costs for transportation can be considerably higher.
No, you're exactly right. That's right. And we actually do counseling every time that we give someone a voucher. We were part of a pilot program several years ago that allowed you to sit down with a family and there's online calculators that you can plug in your address and see if the 20 bucks a month you're saving on rent is, you know, you're not saving anything when you have to travel for your job. So it allows you to put in your destinations, like where's your job, where's your childcare, where's the doctor you go to three times a week? So you can really see if that's a good decision or not. And we do that counseling with our voucher holders.
Okay. I mean, I get the desirability of having diverse opportunities for people in terms of places that they live and everything. But, you know, I've always recognized in the choices that I've made that because I like to live in a more rural area, it always has cost me more transportation-wise than it would have had I lived in a city and I had to go four miles to work. I used to drive 60 miles to work because of the choice I wanted to make. But there's a price to pay for that choice and sometimes people can't afford that.
No, you're exactly right. That's why in our Metro Bond, the policy all approved, we prioritized opportunity areas for our developments because people need to be near services. That those folks who have a Housing Choice Voucher, I do think we're obligated to provide choice, especially if somebody is from an area and they want to stay there. That's where they've always been. So we need to, I think we have to do both.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to just follow up on Commissioner Humberton's point and also add to that, that there are people that have jobs in rural areas. So if there's a job in a rural area, but there's no housing in the rural area. So I think there's, you've got to realize there's a lot of different scenarios and that's why I think having a broad-based geographically, that is, housing choices out there is important.
Yeah, I agree. I want to move on to some of the other substantial policy changes that we're recommending. One of them is a childcare deduction. People in our public housing and our voucher programs are eligible for deductions if they spend a substantial amount of their funding on things like childcare or medical costs and it reduces their tenant rent portion. Right now, if you have a child that is 12 or under, you're eligible for a childcare deduction and we want to change that policy to ensure that people who are caring for disabled children, 13 and over, have access to that as well. So that is one of our proposed changes. We're proposing a landlord payment change, which is a cost-saving measure so I can serve more families. Right now landlords, if somebody's a voucher holder and they give a 30-day notice and they move out of a unit on the 20th and they gave the landlord their notice on the 20th the month before, the landlord is paid through the end of the month. I want to change that policy and prorate that payment. And this is a really big one, this next one. We want to change the language regarding payment standards for our voucher program. And the payment standard is the maximum amount the Housing Authority will pay up to for rent to a landlord across the county. Right now, there's one amount. If you rent a one-bedroom in Canby, Milwaukee, Lake Oswego, Westland, you get the same amount no matter where you go. And I'm changing the language, I'm proposing, we change the language in our plan so that I can set different standards for different areas of the county, opening up the opportunity to live where people want to live. You know, if they want to live near work and it happens to be in Lake Oswego, that would be impossible with our current payment standards. So I at least want to open those doors and give folks opportunities. So that is what that updating payment standards is about. And we'll be bringing those policy changes with the recommended actual rent amounts that will be linked to the market rates later this year. And then project-based vouchers, serving high needs populations. Right now, if you project-based a voucher, you take it out of the hands of a person who can move with it and you tie it to a unit in a building. And we've committed 200 of those to the Metro Bond developments. I want to incent developers to house high needs population, like the homeless or disabled, by giving them higher amounts of rent in the units that are serving those populations. It will also enable them to provide services. So where a payment standard might be limited to, say, $1,000 a month, we would go up beyond that if they can document that they're serving high needs populations.
So that means you're paying the differential?
The people pay 30% of their income and we will pay up to a higher limit. That's what that means.
Thank you.
Just a few more proposed changes. I'm sorry, this is long. We in public housing are adding a preference for homeless families too at every property. I'm able to do that now because the board, when you approved that Affordable Housing and Services Fund, the PLP for housing a few years ago, I actually have a team now of people providing services to people on our public housing properties. We can add more homeless folks because of that. So I just want you to know, thank you. It's tough to house those people with no services and HUD does not give us any. In alignment with HUD requirements, this one's a little controversial as well, but I really believe we need to do this. The Housing Authority has decided to terminate over-income families to open up an opportunity for another low-income household if they live in public housing. The details behind that are important to understand. To terminate somebody, they have to have earned 120% of area median income for two consecutive years. So 100% of AMI for a family of four is about $73,000 a year. So they have to have earned 120% of AMI for two consecutive years. Housing Authority then has the option to either say, "Family, we want you to be able to stay living there, so we're going to raise your rent to what the market would allow." Or, "Family, we want you to move on and pay your market rent somewhere else so we can serve another extremely low-income family in this house." And I'm choosing, but I would prefer to serve another low-income family. But that is a little bit controversial as well. And I think that's everything. I'll turn that back to you guys.
Any questions? Any questions? What the heck? I don't know why, is that me making that noise? Anyway, any questions? See none? We'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Dylan as your moderator.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Chair Bernard. I'm Dylan Blaylock with Public Government Affairs. I'll be coordinating both public comment for this specific public hearing and later on for general comment. If any attendees would like to provide a comment again, specific to this public hearing, the Housing Authority Public Hearing, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. I'll remind that later on during citizen communication, the public is allowed to give comments or ask questions on any matter related to county business. We do have one person who has put their hand up. It is Cynthia. So just one second, Cynthia. Cynthia, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself and you are on to speak regarding the Housing Authority Public Hearing.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I'm very happy to hear you discussing these issues. And there's two things. And there's two things I wanted to say is I do think that um, changing the rent vouchers as was presented for different areas would be very helpful because in, in the past, that has created some inequity on who can get vouchers. And I think it's really important for people to be able to age in place if, if that's what they, you know, if they need a voucher and services and the things that were discussed. I also wanted to throw out there that partial rent assistance would even be helpful if you need to expand your resources. That, you know, if they can't, if a voucher can't be the full amount, perhaps a eight hundred a month, nine hundred, a thousand a month might still be helpful keeping, to keep people housed. Thank you very much.
Cynthia, if you wouldn't mind real quickly giving your full name and your area of, uh, or city of residence.
Sure. Cynthia Johnson, Lake Oswego, Oregon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Anyone else?
No chair, that is it.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. See, anyone raise their hand? No? All right. So we'll announce that this item will come back to for board action on April thirtieth, twenty twenty for a regular scheduled business meeting. With that, thank you Jill very much. Oh, you got something else here. Yeah, you have another hearing. All right. With that, thank you very much. And what's the next item?
All right. Next is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Kevin Moss is back, so I'll ask him to read that.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Uh, today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda, Approval of the Hillside Manor Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the C M G C Contract with Walske Construction and Approval of Resolution Number nineteen forty-four, Authorizing the Execution, Acknowledgement and Delivery of Closing Documents for the Hillside Manor Rehabilitation Project. And that concludes today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda, Mr. Chair.
Do any commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? I'll ask for a motion and Ann, that's you.
Thank you. I move, we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's removed in a second of that. We approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, Paul, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lindstra.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberton.
Aye.
Chair Bernard.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously and thank you Jill. And thank you Ann for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to our, uh, the announce that the board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board, reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the item. The next item is Gary.
Next is a public hearing, a resolution to amend the Transportation System Development Charges Methodology Report, modifying the Transportation System Development Charges Rate Schedule to establish new rates for single-family residential homes and accessory dwelling units. We have Deidra Landen from Transportation and Development to present. And she'll be right on in a second.
There you are.
There she is. Go ahead, Deidra, and you're on mute.
Good morning. You're on mute, yeah.
Unmuted. Okay. Thank you so much. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, so yes, I'm here to talk about system development charges or S D Cs. And specifically, I would like to review a possible amendment to county transportation S D Cs that would establish new rates for detached, single-family residential homes and accessory dwelling units. And I have four primary points to go over with you today. Um, I'm going to start with a little bit of background, then discuss the work group recommendations. We'll review whether the proposal would be revenue neutral. And then finally, we will discuss outreach efforts and next steps before we open it up for some comment. Um, so we're, we're just going to jump into a little bit of background on this. Local governments rely on S D Cs. These are one-time fees assessed to new or expanded developments to help cover the cost of adding capacity to existing infrastructure systems. That can be on roads, water, sewer, storm drains, or even school facilities. You cannot perform maintenance on existing systems with this money, but some examples of eligible road projects might include adding a new travel lane to an existing road or upgrading an intersection to add a signal that improves traffic flow to move more cars through that intersection in a given day. Um, the county adopted a new T S D C plan in January of twenty eighteen. At that time, there were a number of regional discussions about adopting residential T S D C rates based on home size. The board was interested in the concept at the time and I was asked to revisit the idea of tiered residential rates to determine whether there was a link between home size and the number of transportation trips in Clackamas County. In November twenty eighteen, the county brought together a group of stakeholders to consider a tiered residential T S D C rate. The group was tasked with choosing local data sources to identify the number of people living in homes and the number of trips generated by those homes in the region. We then linked this home size, this to the home size data um, to determine whether there was a clear reduction in trips for smaller homes or an increase for trips in larger homes. And again, this is very specific to Clackamas County because of the data sources that we were looking at. We found that the local travel data does support a tiered residential T S D C rate structure for detached, single-family homes. And the work group recommended a three-tier rate structure for these units. In two of the three cases, the rate would be lower than the current rate, which is based on a nation, on a national average. So it shows that our local behavior is a little bit, we travel a little bit less maybe than the national average. So homes larger than three thousand square feet would pay about a hundred and five percent, just over a hundred and five percent of the current rate. And it would increase from four thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Homes between seventeen hundred and two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet would actually pay only ninety-nine point eight percent of the current rate, lowering the rate to four thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. And homes, smaller homes up to seventeen hundred square feet would pay eighty-seven point five percent of the current rate, lowering their rate down to four thousand fifteen dollars per unit. So that was the conversation we had about the detached, single-family homes. What we also found is that there is very little local travel data available for accessory dwelling units or A D U's. And with an average of only three A D U permits pulled each year in Clackamas County, we were not able to link our permitting data with the survey data to get similar information to look at. So the work group began looking at other options. Most T S D C programs use trip data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or the I T E, to develop their rates. And the rest of our county table uses this standard as well. The I T E provides an average daily trip rate for different land use categories and they're based off of submitted traffic studies. So the group began their discussions there. Clackamas County has six residential rate categories adopted. And the I T E assigns trip rates to each of those six categories. The detached, single-family home has a trip rate of just under ten trips per day. The county already applies the lower multifamily apartment rate to A D U's, which assumes an average trip of just under seven trips per day. After reviewing the adopted residential categories, the group recommended lowering the current rate for A D U's by using the I T E trip rates for the condos and townhomes as a baseline. And that assumes an average of just under six trips per day. So it's still pretty close to the multifamily apartment, but it's a little bit less. Ultimately, the group proposed that A D U's between four hundred and fifty to nine hundred square feet would pay the full condo rate of one thousand four hundred and one per unit. And smaller A D U's between two hundred to four hundred and fifty square feet would pay about fif- would pay fifty percent of that rate, as, which drops it to just under three trips per day for those really small units that are two, two hundred to four hundred and fifty square feet. The final step in the analysis for us was to determine whether the recommended T S D Cs would be revenue neutral because we had developed a plan and we have a lot of projects on that list. We want to make sure that we're still going to be able to build those projects. With an average of just three A D U permits being issued each year, we would anticipate losing about twelve hundred dollars a year to that particular change. Um, over the eight-year period studied, only two of the A D U's that we had issued permits for were smaller than four hundred and fifty square feet. So very few A D U's would qualify for that lowest tier. Um, I, yeah, so there were two of them. And that was over an eight-year period. Based on the distribution of permits since twenty-ten, we would expect to collect about ninety-eight percent of the total forecasted assessments on the category of detached, single-family homes. And keep in mind, that's just one of the fifty categories that we actually collect revenue for as part of this assessment through the county. So our estimated maximum annual impact would be two, um, twenty-five thousand dollars. And a lost revenue of twenty-five thousand dollars seems minimal when you put it in context to the fact that the T S D C revenue projections top two hundred and ten million dollars over the life of the twenty-year plan. So we'll talk a little bit about the public outreach. Um, we sent a targeted email out to more than three thousand of our contacts almost three months ago regarding the proposed changes so we could seek some feedback from them. I received one email with clarifying questions, but no formal comments were submitted. These draft changes were posted on our website about two months ago, so they've been out there for comment. We've been asking people for that. And then we also worked with our representative at the Portland Metro Home Builders Association, Roseanne Johnson, both on the work group and to help inform their membership of the proposed changes. Ultimately, we received a letter of support from the Portland H B A, which is included in your packet today. So the next steps, we're planning a formal T S D C plan update next budget year. This is going to allow us to revisit these policy decisions if we decide to move forward with them, while we also review and update the construction costs and the project lists that are currently in the plan so we can bring them all current. Um, the board does not need to take action today unless you would like to see changes to the draft resolution because I will be returning on May seventh to seek approval of the resolution if you'd like to move forward. Do you guys have any questions about that today?
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I do. So um, it took me a while to find this, a lot of material in the packet today, nine hundred and thirty-nine pages. So I'm scanning through um, my iPad. Um, and I may have missed it, but does any of that S, T S D C cover parking?
Cover. Um, we have rates that are based on parking spaces, but we wouldn't use this money to pay for parking. Is that what you're asking?
Well, uh, is there any tie-in to the, I, I guess, I guess you already answered my question then. Um, so the monies are really used for the transportation system, period, and has nothing to do. So on, even though on-street parking is typically publicly owned, right, uh, in most cases. And a unit that's under two hundred square feet, um, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that people don't drive a car. And that's the part I struggled with when we had the work session on this. And I guess, um, I, as I looked into this a little bit deeper and probably the best example I can use is our veteran shelter. Um, those are obviously far less than two hundred square feet, right? Um, and uh, some of those folks actually have cars. Um, and so that's got a parking issue a little bit and it also has a road user issue. So I understand the incentive to um, lower the rates to make A D U's more affordable. But it just seems that um, the presumption there, I know there's not a lot of data and you covered that, you know, there's not a lot of data to go by. But I just, I, I struggle with this then. I struggle with it now. That word, that's, that's not really um, uh, adequate. And I just thought that actually for the ones that were above two hundred square feet, that maybe by doing a little bit different for- formula layout, we could actually reduce the cost, the T S D C for um, the units that were between seventeen hundred and, and two hundred square feet, for example. So um, but I just wanted to make that comment.
All right. Any other questions? Or comments? Are you done with your presentation?
I am.
I, I was kind of like Paul, hoping that there was one more category. Yeah, I think seventeen hundred's too big. But let's say it's up to eight hundred square feet for, uh, that's one thing I was interested in, a reduction. Uh, we have one individual who built an A D U or wanted to build an A D U, but found it so expensive, even at that rate. It's pretty expensive. But, you know, you guys have had a great team. You've worked on this. You figured it all out. And we have support from the home builders. So I'm, I'm uh, in support of uh, putting this on the agenda. Whenever that is.
It would be coming back on May seventh. And I, we actually did look at four categories at one point. There, we don't receive that many, and I can pull the detail before our next hearing, but we just don't receive that many permits for homes that are under eight hundred square feet that made sense for that additional category. And so what we did is we looked at where those reasonable breaks were, both between home size and the number of vehicle trips that they generated. And so that's how we came up with the three that we landed on.
Yeah, the, however, if, if somebody knew that they would have to pay this high uh, uh, transportation fee, they may not even consider it. If you lowered it, you might have more applicants. But, you know, like I said, you guys have worked hard to get this where we're at. Any other questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Savis.
Okay. So just, just back to that, just for clarity, Jim, you mentioned eight hundred square feet. Did you, did you just pull that out of the air as an example?
Well, uh, yes, because I heard that somebody was considering building an eight hundred square foot, but the cost, the transportation system costs were too high.
All right, because the proposal again in, in the, in, in the packet is that lowered amount of from the highest one being four thousand eight hundred and forty for three thousand square feet and above, the delta between that and the less than seventeen hundred square feet, like your eight hundred square foot example, the delta between that is, you know, just a little over eight hundred dollars delta. And I just think that if we're going to incentivize A D U's that, uh, like you were suggesting, that we'd have a um, a lower rate, um, but also bring in the um, the units that were less than two hundred square feet, um, at a, at a, at a, at a smaller, much smaller rate. But um, we got a lot of movement. Um, it's kind of late in the game, but I, like I say, I still struggle with this. It just, it's not that much of an incentive and I don't think it kind of addresses the, the concerns we heard from a lot of the people that said it's too expensive. And, and as, as Deidra pointed out, there's been very few takers um, uh, drawing permits on A D U's. And then the, the big reason is, is that there's a, uh, uh, financial obstacle, a big hill to climb in this regard. So that's the, that's the conundrum.
Yeah, yeah.
Deidra?
Yeah, so I do want to point out that the um, the A D U's, because we did hear that there was a desire to reduce the A D U's. And what we currently charge an A D U regardless of size, when it comes into Clackamas County, is we charge three thousand two hundred and seven dollars is the assessment that would apply. And under the proposal that we're looking at today, a, it would drop under any circumstance, an A D U would be cheaper. The larger A D U's would be two thousand eight hundred and two dollars and then the smaller ones would be one thousand four hundred and one. So we were trying to develop a policy that spoke to that because we've heard that same thing, that for the A D U's, the amount of investment they're having to put into it was a lot lower. But we still wanted to recognize that they are going to generate some trips on our system and try to capture something to help offset that.
Okay. All right, um, see, this is not a, um,
So Mr. Chair, if I may, you can uh, open the public hearing and kick it over to Dylan.
I'm just trying to find this here. Okay, here it is. All right. With that, uh, we'll, and no, no other questions. We'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter.
Great. Thank you, Chair Bernard. Again, if any attendees would like to provide a comment specific to this public hearing, the Transportation System Development Charges Rate Changes, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. We will also get to citizen communication in just a few minutes when the public is allowed to give comments on any questions on any matter related to. When the public is allowed to give comments on any questions on any matter related to county business. Chair Bernard, I see no comments.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing. Uh, that says a lot too, so if people aren't commenting. Um, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh, this is the first reading public hearing. There's no motions to be made. This matter will come back before you, as Deidra said, on May seventh at your ten A M regular business meeting.
So mine uh, does have a motion written on the, on the.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's an error in the scripture, sorry about that, yeah.
That's why I was a little confused when I saw that motion, was I in the right spot? Okay, so uh, thank you very much, appreciate seeing you again, it's been a while.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate the time today.
Great, thank you, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on today's consent agenda. No worries. Under our finance department, approval of a board order authorizing financing for new projects and refinancing under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under our Department of Human Resources, approval of the twenty-twenty agreements with Providence Health Plan for administrative services for Clackamas County's self-funded medical benefits. And under Business and Community Services, approval of a lease agreement between Clackamas County and River City Boat Sales L L C to lease managing operate the Boones Ferry Marina facility. And approval of a contract with Jan's Enterprises for the Carver Boat Launch Parking Lot Curb Replacement and Asphalt Overlay. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Do any commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Okay, please poll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Humberton.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Bernard.
All right, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And with that, we move on to what, Gary?
Uh, Citizen Communications, and Dylan will lead that.
Thank you, Administrator Schmidt. Uh, again, Dylan with Public Government Affairs. I'll be coordinating public comment for Citizen Communication. The public is allowed to give comments on any quest, or ask a question on any matter related to county business. For attendees who want to do that now, on both your PCs and iPads, you have a raise hand button on the Zoom bar. That's at the top or bottom, depending on your device. Um, if you're on the phone, we don't have anybody on the phone. So, um, after that, uh, Chair Bernard, I have several comments that have come in via email. But first, we will go to uh, Elizabeth Federici. Uh, Elizabeth, you, if you can unmute yourself, then you will be on um, with county commissioners.
Great, okay.
We can hear you a little bit in the beginning, so go ahead.
Okay, great. Hi, and thanks for having me back. Uh, I'm Beth Federici, I'm with the twenty cents. And I just wanted to remind everybody that the census is available now. And I hope everyone that's watched has already filled it out, but if not, you can go to twenty-twenty census dot gov. And uh, if you can't do it online, there's a list of phone numbers. We're also going to be sending out paper surveys, I believe, um, coming up maybe even this week. So lots of ways to uh, fill off the census. As we know, it's incredibly important, especially in light of what's been going on. And also, we're still hiring. Um, things are shaping up. Enumeration's going to probably look a little different than it has in the past, but we are still hiring. And folks can go online and apply at twenty-twenty census dot gov slash jobs. So we hope that folks will. I know there are people that probably will be looking for work um, coming up this summer. So I hope that they'll go on and uh, get in the pool. If anybody has any questions, um, otherwise, uh, thank you for your time.
Uh, just like to comment, it's very easy to fill out the census online, takes just a couple of minutes. And uh, it is very important, especially in times like this, with all the challenges. Uh, we need to make sure that we get the federal support. We can only do that if you're counted. So thank you for reminding us.
You are so welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Elizabeth. Uh, next up, I'm going to bring over Mac McCarty. Uh, so Mac McCarty, if you are there, if you can unmute yourself, I think you just did, um, go ahead, please give your name and your area of residence.
My name is Mac McCarty, and I am a junior at the Weston High School.
Thank you for calling in.
Yeah. I'm a junior at the Weston High School and also a part of the teen advisory board at the Weston High School, as well as with Community Living Above. Um, as a whole, we are a group of students who are actively looking to change the community and thus the um, society of within our community by reducing youth substance abuse throughout Clackamas County. Um, so uh, so today I'm here representing a diverse group of youth substance abuse prevention coalitions, including Vibrant Future Coalition, Oregon Impact, Community Living Above, and Oregon Seated Together. Um, for me, you know, as a student, I really only, uh, I really only experienced the fruits of the labor. Um, but it's you guys as Board of Commissioners and as people like Pam Pierce, who are really doing the heavy lifting behind the, behind the scenes, behind the curtain. So today I'm here to thank you for your funding and support. Members from our coalition are on the line today to support this presentation. And we appreciate everyone's time and all the hard work and planning that went into making today happen. You know, even just holding these meetings during these unprecedented times, we recognize that with the global pandemic, you guys have so much on your plates. And so we really appreciate the time and effort to hear from, you know, people like us. Um, so we really appreciate that. Um, oh, just a little bit about me real quick. Um, I have, you may or may not have received a letter from me in your documents. But um, I started my, I started with the teen advisory board in my freshman year. And if that start, that startup was relatively um, quote innocent, or like, if you will, modest. You know, just trying to like, with every, with every other student, just trying to figure out, you know, what the club is going, because there's free lunch, or you know, whatever it is. And but what really kind of blows me away, what really astonished me, is the amount that we've been able to accomplish over the past two or three years. Um, there was, like, a little while ago, there was um, where we were able to bring a man named Chris Heron to come speak with us, and he said something that really stuck with me for a while. And he said, um, in his speech, he said, if I, tonight, if I'm able to touch the heart of one child tonight, one kid tonight, it'll be all worth, it'll, like, that's the most important thing to me. That's what he said. And I think that really kind of stuck with me personally. Because that's exactly what we're doing with the teen advisor board, with these different coalitions and with Community Living Above. You know, if we're, you know, in the past two or three years, or the next two or three years, or, you know, within our lifetimes, if we're able to change the life of one child and like, for the better, you know, that really makes it all worth it. And it's largely thanks to people like you, the Board of Commissioners, who um, continue to fund and support our um, movements. So today I'm s- I'm standing here before you, well, I guess I'm sitting, I'm sitting here before you on the Zoom call. Um, to thank you for um, for this support and this funding. Um, although we're in the midst of a global pandemic, youth substance abuse is more important than ever. Early studies suggest that substance abuse rates are skyrocketing in this uncertain time. So we must continue our work in supporting youth and families despite the pandemic. Um, if you'll allow me, I have a little personal anecdote. Um, you know, with being in high school and as, as a high school student, we come in contact with um, with, you know, substance abuse and substance use, you know, so often, like, m- many kids, it's almost every day, right? And um, so, you know, ju- being able to, like, start the conversation within the teen advisory board and like, start the conversation with our community as a whole, and hopefully soon, ideally, um, with, again, with your support, with more communities in our county, um, just starting that conversation, getting rid of that, like, negative stigma and all that regarding our um, regarding opening up and about this substance abuse. Um, is for many kids, really life-changing, especially for um, the kids who come in contact with it every day. So, you know, once again, thank you for supporting the youth substance abuse and prevention. Our work impacts the lives of the Clackamas County youth in many ways, from engaging classroom presentations to county events and activities, to Oregon's First Recovery High School, and alternative peer groups started by Pam Pierce and Community Living Above. Um, none of these initiatives would have been possible without the funding and support from the Board of County Commissioners. And for that, as a group, we thank you.
Thank you. I had one question. Uh, uh, Living Above.
Yes.
What, tell me a little bit about that.
Community Living Above is a um, is a relatively large organization, it's kind of like an umbrella organization, if you will, of, that includes teen advisory board. It includes um, or it, it oversees the Oregon, it oversees, I'm sorry, Oregon's First Recovery High School, as well as the Alternative Peer Group. Um, you know, it's led and presented by Pam, and um, it gives support and resources to our community with this substance abuse.
All right, well, thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioners? See anything? No? All right, thank you. Next caller.
All right, yes, all right, thank you very much for that. Um, again, if any uh, attendees would like to go ahead and give comments, you can do so by utilizing the raise hand button on the Zoom bar. That's at the top or bottom, depending on your device. Uh, Chair Bernard, I will move on to the comments we have received via email. Um, after each one, I will take a look and see if there are any hands raised by commissioners. That will be the cue to me that you would like to respond or say something. First is from Jordan Winthrop from Estacada. How can Clackamas County justify suspending the Heritage Grant and Community Partnership Program, or C P P grants, that small communities and small businesses rely on? I'm a member of the Est- Estacada Chamber of Commerce, and I know they receive funds, help.
Why Dylan, we're losing you.
Promotes small businesses and you can't hear me?
It might be okay now. Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, I will start over. I'm, I apologize. How can Clack? Okay, uh, let me see. Mount Hood Marketing Council has hired my company to update and maintain the Mount Hood information website that the Village of Government Camp uses to communicate to residents and businesses current and accurate information. They notified me that Clackamas County has told them the funds to keep it open were being withheld, and we need to shut down the website. I have not yet, and I am unsure if it will ever get paid, even for the completed part of the project. As a small business owner, my company has helped many community organizations to set up and maintain effective communications. Many projects were funded by the C P P grants, so many of my clients can no longer pay. As a business who can work from home, we thought we were in the clear of financial distress from COVID nineteen. But now with Clackamas County suspending these grants, the trickle-down to small businesses cannot be avoided.
Well, I, I, I might uh, provide a little thing, and look, Gary probably does too. So the tourism tax revenue is just about zero. The funds, there are no funds to continue the program. And so Gary, you wanna?
Yes, uh, Chair, you're correct. These were grants through our Tourism and Cultural Affairs Department, which were the income. The revenue was entirely on transient room tax, T R T, which because of COVID nineteen, there, there are, there are no taxes anymore. They, they've stopped entirely. And the impacts include our own staff, where we have to unfortunately lay off staff in that department and eliminate that department next month because of that. So it's very, very tragic and unfortunate for both our employees and these grant programs, but we're just terribly sorry. It was, it was not a choice. We had, we could, we had no other choice but to do that because of the total loss of the revenue.
Anyone else? Okay.
I can go on to the next comment then, Chair.
All right.
Okay, the next is from Mike Miller in Canby. Media reports relay that Oregon, Washington, and California are looking for a decline in new cases before talking about reopening businesses. My concern is that declining numbers of cases, although good news that social distancing is working. If they are the only criteria for reopening businesses, the likelihood of opening up the businesses will have an untoward effect in the number of new cases as people are likely to take their opening as a confirmation that the outbreak is over. I foresee some total, totally disregarding the social distancing, thus reopening the infection rate to initial levels.
We have the same concerns, and that is not the only criteria uh, that we will consider. We have, uh, very similar to the governor's three-legged stool, we, we three-legged process. We don't have uh, enough testing opportunities. Uh, we still are lacking in, in some of the equipment we need. Uh, we're going to take this slow, and we're going to take the advice of our professionals. Ken, I saw you raise your hand.
Just gonna say, the governors laid out six criteria uh, to uh, for going forward, if and when we can go forward uh, on, on loosening up the restrictions. Uh, you can go to uh, W W W dot Oregon Governor dot org, I believe it is, or dot gov, excuse me, uh, and to get more information and some more specifics on that.
Right, Mr. Chair, you had Commissioner Savis, then Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I, I'd like to uh, comment on that as well. Uh, obviously, the governors, uh, each state, there's a lot of good minds around this issue about how we, how we um, uh, navigate the next steps into phasing in um, uh, normalization, if you will. And I would certainly like to hear and see what all those strategies are. I'm not hearing consistent from governor to governor. Um, not that I listen to all of them, I listen to some of them, but that, the, the criteria is not the same. And I think we need to hone that in and figure out what the best approaches are. And um, and learn from others on this before we uh, take those next steps. So I, I think we need to proceed with caution and to make sure we keep everyone as safe as possible, and also be respectful and mindful um, uh, that there are some areas in the country, even in Oregon, that have had zero um, outbreaks of COVID. And if they can maintain what they're doing and maintain that, um, that's great. But the problem is right now is that it, you know, it might take two or three weeks before someone discovers they have the, the uh, the um, the virus, and they may have infected others in that period of time. So um, the technology, um, and everything, we just gotta, we just gotta, uh, hopefully that will have more um, um, testing, a more sophisticated testing, and uh, be able to, to measure uh, who's, who can go back to work and when, and, and uh, and keep that separation that uh, is being called out for. But I know, I'm certainly anxious, uh, I know everyone's anxious to, to get back to normal. Uh, we just don't know how we're gonna do that quite yet. I'll just leave it there.
I would say, Paul, last night I was on the phone with uh, H three S, uh, health officers, emergency managers of the tri uh, counties. There won't be one consistent message. I think that the truth is, like, they used to say, you've seen one county, you've seen one county. It's also true, uh, when you look at counties uh, in the tri area, in the tri-county area. We're gonna work together to have the same message, but what works here may not work other places. And certainly statewide, you're not gonna see consistency. But we're gonna try and get as close as we can in the metro area to that. Or, or in the count, tribe, tri-county area to a consistent message as possible. But even our doctors say, uh, you know, what works in Monoma County may not be the same as Clackamas County, but we're working towards that goal. When we have it, you'll get it, I'm, I assure you. Who was next?
Uh, Commissioner Schrader, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schrader.
Yes, my dogs are quiet, so it's a good time to say something. Um, I would be very cautious about opening anything up too quickly. Because um, again, my concern about uh, our citizens and how this is playing out is a secondary surge uh, in the disease. Um, obviously, I've said this before, but that happened in nineteen eighteen. And I frankly think um, caution is going to be the better way to go. I think that when things reopen, uh, business will be dramatically changed. I think we're going to see systemic shifts in how we do business, what succeeds, what doesn't succeed. And we're kind of moving into unknown territory at this point. Um, I think that we're really gonna have to take a look at how we, we work things. Uh, just the one shift that we're dealing with now, for instance, is how we're communicating with each other with. Uh, just the one shift that we're dealing with now, for instance, is how we're communicating with each other with new technology that eliminates that, that close distance between, you know, between people. So I think we're gonna see shifts, but I would really like to uh, have some serious conversations with my colleagues of what those strategies will be for reopening, uh, because at this point, um, I don't think we've even really looked at that, so.
One else?
Yes, uh, one last one, and again.
I, I wanna tell you that we're not gonna do anything that our doctor and our emergency management folks tell us to do. Uh, yeah, without their permission, and, and there is, that's why we had the meeting last night with the tri-counties, is to develop a strategy uh, to get back to work, and it, and you're right. I mentioned last night, I drove all the way from Eugene to go to the T2020 meeting, and I could have done it like this in my hotel room. I drove there and back in one night. This will be a dramatic change. And uh, I've been, hopefully, you know, it'll actually uh, do a lot for the, our environment too, so. Thank you, Martha. We will be very careful, I assure you. And go ahead and go on to the next question.
Okay, sorry about that, Chair. Thought you were kicking it to me. Um, uh, I'll just remind any attendees, if you wanna give a comment, so please raise your hand. The last question that we had over email was from Mary Lundey in Sherwood, quote, "The extreme north end of Clackamas County." How is it that the OLCC liquor stores and marijuana dispensaries were, are considered essential businesses and exempt from closure orders?
I'll tell you, one thing I heard about alcohol stores is that withdrawal from alcohol is a really bad thing to go through without having a place to go. And the lack of places to go during the, this crisis is a huge problem. As far as marijuana, you know, they've given social distancing. And uh, I don't know, I, I find it challenging myself, but uh, not being a user, I don't know. Uh, but that's their decision, not ours. Ken?
I think that the basic thinking on it is simply that, that um, as long as an organization can maintain social distancing, uh, it's not a mandated closure. Uh, is probably the best way to look at it. Um, you go to the grocery store and they've put, put uh, uh, things in place to keep people six feet or more apart from each other, um, wiping down baskets, uh, doing all of the kinds of things to reduce the possibility of infection. Uh, so I think if you go into the liquor store and you're, and you're six feet or more behind people, and you're able to maintain that social distancing, then uh, that's why it's essentially considered allowed.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fisher.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I was just going to say what Ken said, but I just wanted to also emphasize that Oregon did it a little bit differently than other states. We did it, the governor did not identify essential business and non-essential businesses. The order basically closed certain businesses where social distancing isn't possible, and then left it open for businesses that can do social distancing to remain open, which I think was brilliant, because I can tell you, as someone who's involved in the legal profession, lawyers were just really concerned if they weren't considered an essential business, how they would operate when so many people need that kind of support. So I was very pleased with the way the governor framed it, allows manufacturing to continue, it allows our real estate market to continue. It allows building and construction and many key areas of our economy to continue during this time when our service industry that can't socially distance is really struggling. So that's just my thoughts.
Thanks. That's uh, thanks for the clarification. That was helpful. Any other questions or comments?
No, Chair, that is it.
Now, that's it? So we're done with the public portion? Okay, great. Uh, we'll move on to county administrator updates. Gary?
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, I'd like to share with you some good things happening here at Clackamas County. First, the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare accredited our county jail for its compliance in delivering health services. Accreditation by this group means our jail meets nationally established benchmarks. For decades, this accreditation has been the widely accepted standard for jails by the health, legal, and corrections professionals. So thank you to our jail staff and the sheriff's office for their good work to achieve this national designation. Next, one of our workforce specialists in health, housing, and human services has a client in our county's employment investment program. This client is a man in his sixties who struggles with technology. He recently wrote to our staff that he was contemplating quitting his job because he was worried about his age and contracting coronavirus. Uh, so this person wrote to our staff, "I'm calling you," or called our staff, "I'm calling you with a question and a favor, because I respect your opinion and trust your insight. Everything you've done for me has been helpful like nobody else has. Every time we hang up the phone, I feel better than when I did before I called you. So thank you to our workforce specialists who provide these services daily to our most vulnerable public." Finally, last weekend, Clackamas Water Environment Services reopened the Eighty-Second Drive Pedestrian Bridge, which connects Gladstone and Oregon City. This bridge is now capable of withstanding a nine-point-zero earthquake, and will provide passage across the Cluck, uh, Clackamas River for emergency vehicles should and when that event occurs. So these upgrades offer stronger protections for sanitary sewer pipes and other utility lines. Just a few of the good things happening here at Clackamas County. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Great job. Uh, Commissioner Communications and Martha, you're up first.
Well, I just um, wanna give a shout out to all of our staff at the uh, Emergency Operations Center and the great job they've been doing. I think that we should be very happy that Clackamas County, comparatively speaking, uh, because we motivated and we got things going sooner than later, really uh, have experienced fewer folks falling ill and fewer uh, hospitalizations, although we have experienced some deaths. And um, I just am very, very grateful for the work they do, because they're really the pillars that are kind of making sure that all of us uh, are safe. And it makes me think a little bit about my parents, who were both nurses, uh, for example, in hospital systems, and it's given me a new way of looking at the kind of work they do and the kind of work they did, um, in being in hospital systems. But I have to say, Dr. Presence, Nancy, all of the folks who are working daily in, during this really unprecedented times, has really made me know how much we rely on staff. And I'd also like to give a shout out to Gary Schmidt, who's been doing a stellar job uh, through all of this. And um, you know, particularly with tourism, we're experiencing layoffs, uh, that's, that's hard to do. So thank you, Gary, for all the work that you do. And for all of us, every one of us that we've been sticking together, it's really truly one of the best commissions I've ever served on. And I appreciate every single one of you because of that. We are a really, really good team. And I'm glad you're the team I'm on now as we uh, go through, go through whatever's gonna happen next, because things are kind of uncertain right now. Anyway, take care, everybody.
Thank you, Martha. Uh, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I really appreciate that the conversation is shifting, and it's shifting to planning the recovery. And uh, I think this has been a really rough time over the last um, month. It's been hard, social isolating, it's been hard not seeing our friends. I know for me personally, it was my daughter Christine's thirty-fifth birthday on Saturday last week, last Saturday. And I did organize her a Zoom party. He was, we were able to have Uncle Brett and his two kids, and my daughter and her kids, and my son, um, join in on the call, and uh, giggled and laughed, and she liked that. But towards the end of the birthday party, after she had had her cake and pizza, and we sang a couple songs, she went to the door of her foster home and was looking for us. And she started to really get agitated, because it's kind of like, she can't understand. She has the mentality of a fifteen-month-old, so when she's like banging on the window, like, "Mom, you're supposed to be here picking me up. What are you doing on this iPad device?" It's like, no, this is a, that was tough. That was really tough. So I have to admit, I did have my moments of, of lots of tears and lots of sadness, and I know that um, I'm not alone in that, because not being next to people that we love, our grandchildren, our children, um, members of our close friends, grandparents, it's, it's really trying. But the struggle, you know, it's not gonna be over for a while. And I think back to what my mom has, um, used to tell me all the time. She's like, "Sonia, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." And we have got to follow the science. We have got to look at how we can keep this pandemic at bay as much as we can. We have to follow what is recommended. And I can tell you, I am looking so forward to this ending. I'm looking so forward to hugging my grandchildren and seeing my daughter. I don't want to continue in this isolation and the separation. And you know, I'm one of the lucky ones. I've got a husband here who, we share breakfast together, we share dinner together, and we're able to go on walks together. So many people out there aren't that lucky, and they're so very alone. I think of how hard this is for me. I know it's ten times harder for so many other people. So just my message today is keep up the good social distancing. For now, let's listen to our experts. We have scientific models that are looking at how we're doing and what we can do, and where we can ease up. Let's continue on this journey so that we can recover in a very healthy way. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Uh, thank you. Um, just wanna just build on this, this conversation a little bit. Um, uh, it's not what I plan on talking about, but I just thought it'd be a great opportunity to just um, say what's on my mind. That is, I, I really think that having um, a work session pretty soon about talking about some of the thoughts around how we face into normalization. Um, and I think recovery is a step after that, unfortunately, um, but it's also a reality. But I think if we could at least have some uh, dialogue about how, how we go about that, and listen to our uh, Dr. Present and others as far as their input, and take into account what maybe some other jurisdictions are doing, whether they're in the state of Oregon or on the West Coast or East Coast. I've been really uh, been really reading and listening and watching a lot. Um, and it's kind of fascinating. A lot of, like I said, I, like I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of good minds out there, and there's a lot of good ideas. And maybe we'll even hear some more today during our town hall that we have uh, later on at two o'clock. But um, I think we need to understand and hear from our constituents out there, whether they're businesses or whether they're, regardless of what size, small, large, and, and hear, hear some of the circumstances that they're going through, and try to find ways of, like, if there's, again, a phasing, what, what would, what would we take into consideration first? Um, and um, I, I just think those, it's important that we hear from folks, and a, a work session uh, would help. If we do have town halls, one suggestion that I would make, um, we're gonna have one today at two, but we still have a workforce out there that can't participate in that town hall. And, and most town halls are done in early evening, so I would suggest maybe the next one that we uh, especially on this topic, uh, have one in early evening. Uh, it'd be great to hear from people that are actually in the workforce, that are actually doing that social distancing, that are actually employed, and how, how, what procedures and what challenges they have, and we're not gonna be able to hear from that constituency today at two o'clock. Um, what I wanna talk about is to update, uh, spent a lot of time on the phone, um, talking to folks about rural broadband service and um, and transportation. In this morning's JPAC meeting, uh, there was um, quite a bit of discussion about uh, Metro's regional tolling measure. Um, and it's complicated, it's very confusing, uh, but I just wanted to uh, identify that uh, the city of Portland's moving forward, examining, doing a study on tolling everything within the city of Portland. Um, and that study will go on for, I'm gonna guess, throughout the year. And of course, ODOT's doing and looking at studying on I-5, um, and I-205. And will be part of that process in the sense that ODOT will be including us. We won't necessarily be included, of course, in the Portland one, because we're not in Monoma County, we're not in the city of Portland. But the study that Metro's calling a metro regional study kind of gives the reader, um, when you look at the title, the, is the presumption that we're gonna be involved, or it's regional, and it really is not. There's not much of that at all. Uh, there is one element that kind of speaks of that, and that's called a vehicle miles traveled, or VMT. Um, and that would be a means of which it would probably could be implemented at a federal level, um, ideally, but is to replace the gas tax. Um, I don't wanna get into the weeds and get long-winded here, but um, I was a little bit concerned that um, the level of engagement won't be, public involvement won't be in Clackamas County or Washington County very uh, very complete, uh, and very engaging at all. Um, and I think that, that's, that's, that concerns me a little bit. Uh, the ODOT one will probably be the most amount of public involvement and outreach, uh, but certainly not this metro regional measure at all. So I just wanted to draw your attention, so everyone knows that, um, because it's probably gonna draw some ire as, as things go on um, in the future. The other thing that came up today, and we'll talk about it Monday with Commissioner Bernard in our transportation meeting um, on Monday, but um, uh, they are, Metro JPAC is looking at uh, how we, and what we message to the federal government as far as any stimulus money is available for transportation. And um, uh, they're somehow tying in um, the T2020 effort into that. Um, and the timing and the phasing is kind of awkward, because it, um, we don't know if this measure's gonna be on the ballot, and if it is on the ballot, that's in November. And trying to tie in a regional strategy that relies upon that, does, it sounds broken to me. I expressed that today. Um, I, I don't totally see that. Um, but basically, what they're really asking for is, a sense is um, uh, authorization for staff to just take the lead on this. And I think that we um, uh, need to discuss that further and realize that um, uh, if we do that, that we don't really have the, the, well, we certainly have great staff at our end, but we don't have the influence. And I think our political influence, uh, we need to use every muscle we can in this regard to make sure that our unique needs uh, are met, and just like Washington County's unique needs uh, are met, and that uh, our projects and our programs that are important to us um, are, are met as well. So I just wanna bring that to people's attention right now, that it seems as though this um, virtual meetings and lack of engagement um, at a very critical time when it comes to funding might disadvantage us. I think we need to somehow put ourselves in the public outreach programs in the forefront to make sure we don't get left out. That, that's essentially my, my concern. Uh, we, we um, uh, have not fared well when it comes to uh, a, a regional share uh, and uh, in, in efforts, uh, when it comes to um, transportation. So I'll stop there and just let people know that I, that's what I'm, those are the two things I worked on this week, and um, with a great interest. And um, and just tell everyone to be well, be safe, um, stay healthy. Um, and uh, and again, a shout out to all the emergency responders and all the people on the front lines that are um, working every day, um, and putting themselves at risk, but on behalf of uh, on behalf of us all. So I just wanna uh, express my appreciation for all of those. Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you. Um, for the benefit of the public, I'll, I'll reiterate some of the things that uh, I'm sure most of you already know. I was on our tur- tourism board meeting this morning, and it was some uh, a distinctly sad moment to know that we have to lay off thirteen of our, or excuse me, eleven of our thirteen employees in that division, and, and then bring them in under uh, uh, Or excuse me, eleven of our thirteen employees in that division and and then bring them in under uh. Supervision by Gary Schmidt for the interim. I do look forward to the day when we can get back to normal and rebuild that organization. An incredible amount of work over the years was was put into that organization to make it the high performing organization that it was. Um, and I look forward to getting back to that. Um, as you know, we don't know what the status of the county fair will be this year. Uh, the county fair board is looking at at uh what their finances are. They're looking at worst-case scenarios uh as well as medium and best-case scenarios on the financial end. Um, as far as the uh garden show that is normally occurs at the event center uh in either late May or June. Uh, the go-no-go date is May fifteenth uh at this point. Uh, we don't know if it will go forward. Um, that will be the final date where they'll make the final decision is yes or no. Um, other than that, um, I don't have a lot to report. I do think that the governor's uh six-point plan of of how we would open up and what the markers are. To make it possible to open up uh are are appropriate. And uh, I hope we meet those markers quickly and can get back to a normal life. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess it's my turn and I don't think we're gonna get back to a normal life. Uh, a new normal life, maybe. Uh, Martha and I were online with many of our Clackamas County senators and representatives uh yesterday. Uh, that's the Clackamas Caucus. They just wanted to hear from us, our update. Uh, Nancy and Dr. Present were also on the Nancy Bush and Dr. Present were also on the phone. I thought it was a great discussion. Uh, and then uh tri-county chair discussion last night, Richard Swift, our health officer. And uh, our uh Nancy Bush. Uh, we're also on the phone as well as the tri-counties folks and we discussed. Uh, quite a bit about uh, uh, how do we start opening things up? There is a task force that uh that is working on that. And I'm sure that uh before anything happens. That task force will have some recommendations of how to move forward. Uh, that it was, oh, and also Paul on that, uh, there was some discussion. Uh, in the T twenty twenty package is the South Corridor. There was some discussion that if the federal government could take on a bigger portion of the light of the South Corridor project. Uh, then there could be, they could reduce the size of the package or do more projects. Uh, with the package at the same amount. But that project is moving forward one way or the other. I shouldn't say that. May move forward one way or the other. Also, I wanted to admit, my brother lives in Boston and because traffic is so light, the turkeys have taken over the freeways. Sent me a picture of the turkey walking down the freeway. Uh, usually they would get squashed. But uh, now they're just all over the place. Ken has turkeys in his neighborhood, but. And and the turkeys are walking on the crosswalks. So it's kind of kind of weird.
They get on my roof.
Yeah. Well, with that, I hope you all stay healthy. We're working hard to get back to. Uh, a new normal and uh all of us are doing a great job. And we'll see you uh at two o'clock. Thank you. And with that, let me get my hammer. We are adjourned.